I'd like to call the City Council Committee the whole meeting for November 1st, 2017, to order. At this time for our moment of silence, I just wanted to note today, there were eight of us Quad City mayors at the Mayor's Hunger Luncheon for the In From The Cold Program. And as we think about going into this holiday season, let's be mindful of those in our community that not only may not have a place to live, but also may be looking for their next meal. And I think it's a responsibility for all of us as we look forward, not only to the holiday season, but in our everyday life, the importance of making sure we take care of all individuals in our community, no matter what their status. So with that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Alderman Meeker, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I want to plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Meeker. Jackie, would you please call the roll, please?
Ambrose.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Meeker.
Here.
Rossen.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to say good evening, and as we begin the meeting of this city council, I would again like to welcome all those in attendance, and also those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We're happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on the committee agenda, you are encouraged to do so during the standing committee. You will also have an opportunity to address the city council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself or the committee chair, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone will observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. So thank you again. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Nothing this evening, your honor.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have three public hearings. These will be under community development, and I'd ask Alderman Graham, Alderman Gripp to lead that discussion.
Thank you, your honor. I'll open the public hearings for community development this evening. Public hearing number one is a hearing concerning the proposed conveyance of vacated Rugowski Drive, Pleasant Street, Ripley Street, and three alleyways located in Block 1 and 2 of Noel's Second Edition to the city of Davenport. St. Ambrose University is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing?
Good evening. PJ Foley, Director of Government Affairs with St. Ambrose University, and Jim Hannan, Director of our Maintenance here. We thank you guys, thank the council and the city staff for working with us as we have expanded our campus and encompassed many buildings and through the southeast part of the campus here, and that's the additions here. We want to convey some alleys and some streets. I do know, talking to Alderman Gripp and also to city staff there, we will want to make an amendment here to take half of Rugowski Drive, half of Pleasant, and then the alley in between those two out, as we didn't come into an agreement with birthright, which we're fine with, and we want to maintain public access for that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one else, I move to close the public hearing.
Aye.
There's a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two is for the ordinance for case number REZ-17-09, request of Michael R. Leep Sr. for the rezoning of 13.465 acres, more or less, of property located at the southeast corner of Eastern Avenue and East 53rd Street, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C2 General Commercial District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the podium, state your name and ward, please.
Good afternoon, your honor, members of the council. My name is Greg Jaeger. I'm an attorney with the Pasternak Law Firm, 300 block of West 3rd in Davenport, here tonight representing the applicant. With me is Chris Postelik. He is the Vice President of Operations for Gurley Leap Dealerships in a three-state area. Just wanted to give you a quick overview of what was going on, what we're asking for. The rezoning is to allow Gurley Leap, known locally as LuJacks, to relocate several of their car dealerships to this location. The Volkswagen, the Audi, Porsche, and Mercedes-Benz dealerships are asking to relocate to that location. We had a meeting with the neighbors. It went very well, was well attended. We had the public hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe we had one neighbor stand up with a concern, not necessarily an objection to the rezoning, dealing with stormwater, which obviously will address. Davenport has very stringent requirements, not only for quality, as well as quantity control, on stormwater. After that period of time, we met with staff to see which conditions would address neighborhood concerns, and I think we've come to a number of conditions that take care of the things that the neighbors initially raised as issues. For example, lighting could be an issue. We've agreed that we would put traffic, the lights for the parking lot would be no taller than 25 foot. They would have shields on the back of them, so that the light would not bleed to the south, to the neighbors to the south, and that the lights would be powered down after the dealership closes, consistent with the needs for security. Security lighting helps us when we put our cameras out to identify people who are causing problems. Nothing ever prevents vandalism, but this helps us to identify that. So some security lighting is needed, but not the full lighting that's normally there during the business hours. For noise, interestingly enough, at the neighborhood meeting, a neighbor raised a concern about noise that we didn't think about, and we've addressed that as well. When salespeople are trying to locate cars on the parking lot, they'd had a tendency to hit the car alarm with the key fob, and that would identify where the car was located. Neighbor said, "Hey, why do you do that? It just causes concern to me." And we stopped that practice right away. So those kinds of things, good interaction with the neighbors, make for a better resolution. I would want to take just a moment to address one other concern in the conditions, so that the neighbors hear it from us. The very last condition, condition number nine, deals with the restriction of other uses within 300 foot of the property owners to the south. Now Gurley Leap is bringing this forward in the anticipation that it will need all of the ground that it's asking to rezone, purely for Gurley Leap purposes. But staff, doing a good job, says, "What if? What if someday down the road, it doesn't work out that way? Let's restrict some of the uses adjoining the adjacent residential properties." Since we didn't see that as an issue for our use, we were okay with it. But it had the unintended consequence of letting the neighbors think that maybe we were going to subdivide the ground and put other uses on the property. We're not. This is going to be a car dealership for the four car dealerships, the franchises. And I talked to the neighbors after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and explained that to them. I think they were comfortable with that explanation. But I also said to them, "I will say that to the council publicly, so that the council can rely, and the neighbors can rely, on what I'm saying, which is, it's the four dealerships. We are not going to subdivide the ground, we are not going to sell the ground. The uses are restricted. It's to try and protect the neighbors from a what-if that we don't think is going to happen." But I did want to say it publicly, and I thank the council for the opportunity to let me do that. What we're asking for is the rezoning. We hope that you will consider it favorably. I'm going to ask Mr. Postelik to talk for just a quick moment, and if there are questions at committee the whole, we would be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to stay in front of you. We're looking to invest, you know, approximately 14 to 15 million dollars into this project in Davenport, and we're very excited about starting soon, but unfortunately, having four franchises with four sets of architects and, you know, four sets of reviews of plans, we can't go as fast as we'd like to. One of the most important aspects of that is getting the zoning approved, because they're all asking us to make sure that happens in this process. So that is important to us to get that done, that's why we're here. We continually want to be good neighbors, you know, as, you know, council said, you know, we spend time with the neighborhood meetings, we have other neighborhoods that we're in, and we want to make sure that we're good neighbors, and we'll continue to do that one. The existing dealership on Harrison will continue to be there, will be absorbed by some of the other opportunities we have at that facility there, so we don't have to worry about that. And we don't have any expectation of using the new site for anything other than these purposes. It's extremely important to us, we need that property. We're not going to sell or subdivide the ground. We anticipate that at some point, the site will be fully utilized, but until then, we'll just keep looking and making it very nice, with pretty grass and everything else. We appreciate your consideration and approval of this zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Aye.
There's a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three is for the ordinance for case number REZ-17-10, request of Women and Spiritual Hope Ministries, Inc. to rezone 7,847 square feet, more or less, of property located at 5210 North Division Street, from R4 Moderate Density Dwelling District to R5M Medium Density Dwelling District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this matter? Step to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Brett Marshall. I'm an attorney with Lane &amp; Waterman here in Davenport, and I represent the applicant, Women and Spiritual Hope Ministries, Inc. In our moment of silence this evening, we took an opportunity to recognize those who are less fortunate than ourselves, and what the applicant is proposing here, the proposed rezoning, is a perfect opportunity for us to do that. What the applicant is asking for is a rezoning to allow them to operate essentially a group home for women who have recently been released from some form of incarceration, and gives them an opportunity to participate in a one-year program, to give them opportunities in life that they didn't have prior to their incarceration, specifically provide them with life skills, you know, how to balance a budget, how to maintain a job, get a job and keep a job, those types of opportunities. The program that's been proposed is very strict. It's a voluntary program. These women are not going to be placed in this program by the state or any similar governmental authority. It's completely voluntary, so the people that are coming in here really want a change in their lives, and this is an opportunity for us as a community, give them that opportunity. We did hold a neighborhood meeting. Two neighbors came to the neighborhood meeting. One of them lived next door, and she had some concerns, some safety concerns, and the other property owner that came to the neighborhood meeting lived directly behind the proposed rezoning, and she didn't have a problem with it, but suggested that the applicant put in a fence as part of this rezoning, and that was actually a condition made, a suggestion, condition made by the city staff, that a fence be put in place, and the applicant has agreed to do that, and as well to cooperate with city staff in whatever other manner necessary in order to get this rezoning project done. So we would request respectfully that the city grant this rezoning request and allow this great program and great opportunity to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? State your name and address, please.
I'm Shirley Follen, 1717 West 53rd. Lived directly behind my property, is about four feet from their property line. And I've lived here for 49 years. I've always felt safe and secure. Right now, I hardly sleep at night worrying about having these convicts. They are criminals, they've been in jail, and I know maybe all of our bads, some are. But I am scared of this, and I am wondering if this should be zoned higher than it is, since these people are basically detained here. They said they cannot come and go as they please. These girls cannot go out and go to a movie tonight, they cannot go shopping tomorrow. They are detained in this home, kind of like a halfway house. When they leave, they have to go to work and come back. They are not the six college girls that are going to be living next door to me, which I would not mind, I would welcome them. I would not be afraid of six college girls. But these are people that have been detained in prison. Prisons are rough. What you don't know, you can learn. This is what the public knows. And I am wondering which one of you would like to have this halfway house beside you with your grandkids, your children, in your yard, where they can see them every minute that they are in your yard, on account of the way this house is built up, where the first level can see, there is a fence there, a six-foot fence. This house is built up to where they basically can see over that, 20 foot down, they can go to a lower fence and come around. It's not a safety procedure at all, not in my fear of this. Furthermore, who would want to buy my property with the halfway house full of criminal girls, not me, that have just gotten out of an institution, to raise their children or their grandchildren? So my property will not be worth anything, and I will have to live in fear. I'm not saying that somewhere else, there's not a place for this kind of an organization, because there probably is. But I hope that each one of you will figure if you would like to raise your children or your grandchildren beside what I'm calling a halfway house, because I do not see much difference in them detaining these women here and letting them go to work and come home, not free to go as they want to, than a halfway house. Yes, they're selecting these women from the prison, they're going to get them, and these women, I guess, are going to pay $100 a person per week to stay there, where they're getting it, I don't know. Maybe the church, maybe from tax dollars, I don't know. But I think if I were in prison and somebody said, "Hey, come live with me, we'll pay your way, we'll feed you, we'll do whatever," I would go too. Not necessarily to learn a better case of life, because it was easy. Because as you all know, some people, the ones that end up in jail, they look at things a little differently than we do. A lot of them, they take the easy route, or they wouldn't be there. No, I haven't had it easy, and I'm sure all of you haven't all had it easy. But did we end up in jail? No, because we have morals, we have morals, we have standards, we live a certain way. And if I knew that these girls were doing that, like most college girls, this would not give me a fear. But I do not think that these girls were raised, or women, all of them, to respect the Lord or a country or whatever that the rest of us do that makes us moral people. So I am afraid, and I want, before you make your decisions, that you would think, would you like to have somebody living four feet from your property line, I know that sounds close, but my house is old and it didn't used to be zoned the other way it is now, that had just gotten out of prison, to have access to watching your children, your grandchildren grow up, or your great-grandchildren even, and your property value go down, because nobody want to buy it with these little children? Now would each and every one of you see anything wrong with this? When I've lived there for 49 years, somebody to come in and just completely take away my peace of mind, the value of my property and the whole thing? Well, that's why I'm here tonight, to ask you each to look at it from your personal point of view. Would you want this to happen to you? And there is probably a good place for this organization, maybe at their church, or close to their church, on their church grounds, anything. But I do not think that I should have to give up my life at 78 years old almost, for somebody that has broken the law, when I have lived my life without breaking the law. I thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close this public hearing. There's a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? This public hearing is closed. That concludes the public hearings for community development. Back to you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Our next item, there are no presentations for tonight's meeting. Are there any petitions or communication from any of the council members this evening? Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, your honor. I have two announcements tonight. The next monthly third ward meeting will be held Saturday, November 11th, at 10:00 a.m., Cedar Memorial Christian Church at 306 Cedar Street. Public Works Director Nicole Gleason will be our special guest. I'll share an update on city business, we'll have time for questions, concerns, and suggestions as we always do, and we'll have some treats from the new Westside Bakery, Chicks Wharet, and we'll kick off the meeting with a short Memorial Day remembrance. So that's Saturday, November 11th, at 10:00 a.m., Cedar Memorial Christian Church. I also wanted to let folks know about another Memorial Day event at City Cemetery. There are more than 100 veterans who served in conflicts ranging from the War of 1812 through World War II, as well as the Schluswig-Holstein War, laid at rest in Davenport City Cemetery. And on Saturday, November 11th, beginning at 12:00 noon, they will be remembered in a ceremony that includes an honor guard, a three-volley rifle presentation, and the reading of the veterans' names who are interred there. Fizzers can also visit the Sextons College, walk through the cemetery, and see all the improvements that have been taking place. There'll also be a chance to learn about the sponsorship for the Wreaths Across America program, that places a holiday wreath on the grave sites of each U.S. veteran at the cemetery in December. The cemetery is located at 1625 Rockingham Road. Again, the date for this event is Saturday, November 11th, beginning at 12:00 noon. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to share that I have a ward meeting this Saturday, 9:30 at KSI, and Director Hoke will be sharing what's going on in the Parks Division, so hopefully you can join me. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Alderman Rossen.
Thank you. Several things. One, I will be having a ward meeting next Tuesday, November 7th, that is voter, voting day, so if you haven't voted yet, make sure you do by 8:00 p.m. or vote at the auditor's counter, anytime before that. So the ward meeting is at 6:00 p.m. at Madison Elementary, Tuesday, November 7th. Everyone's welcome to attend. The other item is, East Bluff Neighborhood Association will be doing a dedication of a bug hotel, and yes, you heard me correctly, it is a bug hotel, in honor of our sister city, Carlisle, Ireland, and that will be happening November 10th at 10:00 a.m., so everyone is invited to attend. It'll be a fun event. Sister Cities is involved, the Quad Cities Convention and Visitors Bureau is also involved, and we have a lot of neighborhood people coming out for the event. It will be videotaped, and the video will be sent over to Carlisle, Ireland for their archives. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rossen. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, your honor. Just a quick thanks to Police Department for all their hard work lately, and appreciate their time and conversations on issues concerning our city lately. And then a reminder to everyone, next Friday, the 10th of November, is the Davenport Veterans' Day Parade, so the schools are off, all the school bands will be in, tons of organizations, so please, if you can, come down to downtown Davenport and stand on the sideline and clap a little bit for some folks, World War II folks and Korean and veteran Vietnam folks that are walking. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Again, I want to just thank Tiffany Thorne Dyke for a great job with the parade that we had on Saturday, great turnout, and thank a number of my colleagues here who were involved as judges or participants, and so that was a great event for a lot of family members coming together. And again, I want to just reiterate the point, next Tuesday is voting day, so we ask all of you to please exercise that very important right and get out to vote. Seeing no other comments, we're going to move on to our action items for discussion. First area to be discussed will be community development, and Alderman Gripp will lead that discussion.
Thank you, your honor. I opened this meeting for community development this evening. Item number one is a third consideration, ordinance for case number ROW-17-05, request of Genesis Health Systems at 3200 West Kimberly Road, to vacate a portion of a sanitary sewer easement, which would be located under the proposed medical building. Existing facilities located in the area to be vacated will be located adjacent to the proposed building in the remaining portion of the sanitary sewer easement. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? State your name and address, please.
Brett Marshall, attorney with Lane &amp; Waterman here in Davenport. I represent Genesis Health System. Just as a reminder, this was a requirement of the city to vacate this portion of the sewer easement underneath the building as a condition to approval of the site plan, and so this is just the Genesis moving forward with that requirement.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? Is there anyone from council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number two is a third consideration, ordinance for case LL-17-01, being the local landmark designation of the John F. Kelly Company Wholesale Groceries Building, located at 225 East 2nd Street. The purpose of the designation is to recognize the John F. Kelly Company Wholesale Groceries Building, historic significance to the city of Davenport. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number three is a second consideration, ordinance for case number SNC-17-02, being the request of the city of Davenport to change the name of a former segment of Veterans' Memorial Parkway, located west of Utica Ridge Road, abutting Walsh Point 3rd Edition to East 67th Court. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number four is a second consideration, ordinance for case number SNC-17-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to change the name of a segment of Forest Grove Drive, east of Utica Ridge Road, to Forest Grove Court. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item five is a first consideration, ordinance for case number REZ-17-09, request of Michael R. Leep Sr. for the proposed rezoning of 13.465 acres, more or less, of property located at the southeast corner of Eastern Avenue and East 53rd Street, from C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to C2 General Commercial District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Alderwoman Tompkins.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I attended the neighborhood meeting, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody involved for coming to that and for answering your questions. Appreciate the businesses and the attorneys representing to take the time to go through and explain this project, and to really hear everybody and answer their questions, and to meet people in the middle, so I do appreciate that, and look forward to this opportunity moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Seeing no one, this item will move on. Item number six is a first consideration, ordinance for case number REZ-17-10, request of Women and Spiritual Hope Ministries, Inc. to rezone 7,847 square feet, more or less, of property located at 5210 North Division Street, from R4 Moderate Density Dwelling District to R5M Medium Density Dwelling District. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is corporate counsel. The 7th Judicial District has halfway houses in our community. What's the difference between the 7th Judicial District and what this request is?
Alderman Ambrose, this is a request by a private organization that's doing some, a private organization that's doing some, I believe, spiritual outreach, approaching this from a, apparently a religious-based perspective, whereas the 7th Judicial District is an actual state agency, and then you'll have some places that are actually under contract with the state to do this type of thing, so those are the differences.
Tom, we got a little experience with religious-based organizations this last year. Would this be considered similar to what we've dealt with earlier in the year?
It could be. I'd have to know more about the specifics, but it sure could be.
Can you look into that and give us some direction?
Yes.
Thanks. Thanks.
Alderwoman Tompkins.
Thank you. I also attended this neighborhood meeting and heard the concerns. It's my understanding the difference, Tom, I could be wrong, but in this case, people who want, it's a voluntary, so in regards to the state, when it's a halfway house, they're forced by the state to be there, they're told to be there, so in this instance, they choose to be there, and they have to go through an application process. I absolutely appreciate Alderman Ambrose's concerns and want to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed and make sure that this is a safe venue for the neighbors, absolutely, but again, it's my understanding is it's a voluntary program. Thank you.
Alderman Mattson.
Thanks. Tom, we talked about yesterday, and I'll certainly wave to the good alderwoman there, but there's, in the readings, there's, it says they can have up to 25 people. I would like, and if there's more discussion, I'll hold off, but I'd like to make an amendment to that. We need, that's too many if we're going to do this, so I, again, we can have discussion on what that number is, and maybe we can talk about that in another time, but I think that's way too high. I know the place, it can't possibly hold that many people, so... And then the other, just a clarification, because I heard people say differently, so are these, do you know, and if you don't know today, obviously, feed us, you can get us information for next, are these ladies coming right out of prison and so they're going to a half a house, but then they could choose to go this one instead of the other place or vice versa, so there seems to be some confusion on that, and when you answer that, if you can't now, that's fine, or whoever, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I would defer on that to the planning staff.
So if you know now, if not, you can give us an answer later. Make sure, yeah, research at least for next time, and then if there's, whenever nobody else, I'll make that motion. We talk about the number. I mean, I know the size of it, can't possibly hold that, so I'll wave to, if you want to make a number.
I think when we were at the neighborhood meeting, eight was the number, but we should probably confirm that with the petitioner.
Agreed.
And then whatever that number is, we can talk about that next week. I'd be agreeable to that amendment.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you. I did have, if you could, someone could briefly just explain for the folks in the room the reason for changing it from R4 Moderate Density to R5M Medium Density Dwelling District, please? If someone could do that?
I'm Matt Flynn, Community Planning and Economic Development Department. There was some discussion after this case went through the Plan Zoning Commission with a commercial office designation that an R5M would actually be the minimum necessary to accomplish the goal for the applicant. It is across the street from, it's adjacent to commercial office zoning, and it's across the street from, I believe, C1 zoning where the Casey's is, so we didn't have a problem in terms of it being a spot zone, but again, the crux of the matter is that in order to take these two units and combine them into one and house seven people, if you recall, there's an issue with how many unrelated people can live together, so it's basically combining, what this case is about is combining a duplex into one living unit and allowing, according to the applicant, six residents to live there. If I, since I'm up here, I can respond quickly to Alderman Mattson's concern about the 25 unrelated people. I think it's actually was 20, and that's the definition of boarding house. Can accommodate up to 20, 20 people. However, we are planning to address that by including a condition that references our occupancy code, which is in Title VIII, so you'll see that in the next version of the ordinance if this moves forward.
Thank you, Matt. Alderwoman Tompkins.
Thank you for letting me speak again. I also just wanted to share, it's my understanding that the property as of now could, they could start this program right now. The issue was to have one more person in the home, so this is something that they talked about, whether or not to move forward with an additional person, but just to clarify, they could do it now, they just wanted to have the ability to serve six people, so just wanted to share that. Thank you.
So what I heard is that we are going to amend this to put a number in there. We will do that at the next meeting. Is that right?
Yeah, what I heard is you want to verify what number you want to go with.
Correct.
Staff is planning on adding the language to point out that we do have occupancy limits based on square footage, and this is not a very big place.
Okay, so we will keep this on discussion, and then bring this back next week. We will get that number and decide where to go during the council meeting next week. Seeing no one else, we will move on to item number seven, which is a resolution approving a six-month moratorium on changes in business licenses in the Rockingham Road corridor between Division and South Concord Streets, where the new license represents a substantial change from the previous use. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this resolution? Anyone from the council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have a reason for this?
Alderman Ambrose, as we discussed yesterday, do you want to take a first? All right. With all the investment we're making with Rockingham Road and with the West End Area Plan and the commercial corridor, we wanted to kind of take a moment and ensure that we had the right plan going forward, and this gives us time as we're developing the new land use code in conjunction to make sure that we're putting a good economic development plan together for the area.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else from council wish to comment on this? And I'll just echo what City Administrator Spiegel said. We've made a significant investment on Rockingham Road. The folks down there have been waiting for this for a long time, and I think it's an opportunity where we'll see an investment in infrastructure equal an investment in development, and we want to make sure that we're getting the right development on Rockingham, and I'm in support of this resolution. So seeing no one else, we'll move on to item number eight, which is also a resolution authorizing the conveyance of portions of vacated Rogowski Drive, Pleasant Street, Ripley Street, and three alleyways located in Block 1 and 2 of Noel's Second Edition to the city of Davenport. St. Ambrose University is the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment?
Hi, PJ Foley, Director of Government Affairs, and Jim Hannan, Director of Maintenance. Like we said earlier, we are fine with the plan, except we just want to amend our conveyance of the alley between Rogowski Drive and, Rogowski Drive and Pleasant Street, and leave that open access for public, and then also from Harrison, on Rogowski Drive from Harrison to that alley, and then on Pleasant from Harrison to that alley. I'll leave that, not have those conveyed due to not having that agreement with birthright. We're fine with that, and convey everything else.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
To amend? I would, I would ask that the petitioner get with Bruce from Community Planning and Tom Warner to make sure that we have exactly what you want changed. This will stay on discussion, and then we will see the new proposed resolution next week. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Alderman Ambrose, you?
No.
No. Seeing and hearing no one else, that will conclude. I would entertain a motion to place all items on consent with the exception of item number six and item number eight. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That concludes community development this evening, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. I guess as a clarification for those in the, joining us this evening, when we talk about moving on and so forth, this is the opportunity for people to provide input, as many have been doing this evening. Next week at the council meeting, the items that have been discussed, when an Alderman, in this case Alderman Gripp, said they will move on, they'll become part of a consent agenda, and they'll be improved, they'll be approved in one group. Those items that are left on discussion will be discussed in more detail to answer any other questions, so you get a sense of what's happening a little bit in this process. Our second area to be discussed tonight is public safety, and Alderman Mattson will lead that discussion. Alderman Dickman will set the agenda.
Thank you, your honor. I opened the items for discussion in public safety. The first consider, the number one is a third consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule 1 of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Snow Routes" by adding and deleting various streets. Someone make a motion that there's no snow, that'd be wonderful. Anyone from the public? No motion, really? Okay. Anyone from the public? Counsel, we've talked about it a couple times, okay? Number two is a third consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule 5 of Chapter 10.96 entitled "Fourway Stop Intersections" by adding Utica Ridge Road at Veterans Memorial Parkway slash Forest Grove Drive. Anyone from the public concerned? Counsel, all right. Number three, second consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96 entitled "No Parking" by adding Wilkes Avenue along the east side from 16th Street South to the alley. Anyone from the public have a concern? Counsel, very good. Number four is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Schedule 9 of Chapter 10.96, intersection, I'm sorry, 14 intersection traffic signals by adding Elmore Avenue at Veterans Memorial Parkway. Anyone from the public? Counsel, very good. Number five is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 9.40 entitled "Projectiles and Toy Pistols" by renaming the chapter "Projectiles, Toy Pistols, and Fireworks" and adding a new section, 9.40.030, to allow for the legal use of consumer grave fireworks on specified dates and times. This was amended at the Committee of the Whole. Anyone from the public have a concern? Counsel, very good. I'm sorry. Alderwoman Rossen.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just had a follow-up, because I had asked at the briefing three weeks ago, what exactly does "toy pistols" reference?
What that, that's a very old code provision, and what it has to do with is cap guns, so black powder.
This is the wording sounds like we're allowing toy pistols.
Right. It's very old.
Okay. So it's not worth updating the language?
Not really.
Why would that be?
Well, these cap guns have, are pretty much a thing of the past.
Yeah, they're not sold anymore, are they?
Yeah, I'm not even sure if they're sold anymore. I haven't seen one in years, but they're the little black powder cap guns.
So is there, is there any reason why that's still in the ordinance then?
There is no reason to take it out, I guess, for...
So it's equal, no reason to keep it in, no reason to take it out?
Right.
Six of one.
Yeah, so we generally focus on things that people focus on.
All right, we good? Okay. You good? Okay. Number six is a resolution closing various streets, lanes, or public grounds on listed dates. We have one, J&amp;M Displays, fireworks for the village of East Davenport Christmas Walk, Saturday, December 2nd, 2017, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The closure location is Lower Lindsay Park, and just for the public, the fire department is signed off and good with this, okay? Anyone from the public have a concern? Counsel, all right. Number seven is motion approving beer and liquor licenses, new licenses. We have one. Casey's General Store, number 2168, at 1691 West 53rd Street, license type E. The notifications were mailed. Anyone from the public have a concern here? Counsel, very good. And then we have a bunch of annual license renewals. They're in your agenda, and you can read them. We don't read them. You can read them. Anyone from the public have a concern with any of those? Very good. Counsel? Okay, I'll ask Alderwoman Dickman to recommend an agenda.
I move that all items be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed. Very good. Mayor, we're back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson and Alderman Dickman. Our third area to be discussed is Public Works. Alderman Ambrose will be the chair of that discussion, and Alderman Dunn will set the agenda.
Thank you, your honor. The first item for discussing is a resolution to hold a public meeting to convey parcel R0429-03 and R0429-03A and R029-02A to the property owner at 3115 Daisy Avenue. Anybody from the public? Counsel? The second item for discussion is a resolution awarding a contract for the Riverfront Infrastructure Demolition, the Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Bett North Iowa, in the amount of $118,553. Do we have someone from staff? And Brian, for the public, we're really getting close on the riverfront. Can you, for the public, tell them what this is about and how long it should take?
Brian Shad.
When it's going to start and when it should end?
Brian Shad, Public Works. This is the removal of the remaining pavement and sidewalk and the former ramp that went into the casino that has since gone away. These were very favorable bids. It will clean up the area, refill it with topsoil, seed that for next year's growth. We'd like to get started yet this month. It should go fairly quickly. We should see it quite a bit before the snow flies, providing the snow stays away for a while. Perfect.
So Brian, why don't you stick up, stick there for a little bit. First off, the riverfront is looking incredible with the dock down and the new green space. It's really amazing. Anybody from public? Counsel? And the last thing, can you get an update on Division and Kimberly? I was out there today, and when's it going to wrap up for the season?
Well, we're finishing up the paving items. We should see all the lanes open here, hopefully later this week, possibly into next week. We will see momentary lane closures during the day as we work on driveways, sidewalks, site restoration, and we'd like to have everything buttoned up here yet this fall.
So you think you have the sidewalks and everything, all that done still this year?
Weather-dependent, yes.
Thanks, Brian. Alderman Dunn, please set the agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. I'd entertain a motion to put both items on the consent agenda, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Dunn. And our last area to be discussed is finance. Alderman Tompkins will lead that discussion.
Thank you, your honor. I open up finance. We have 10 items tonight. Number one is a resolution adapting the fiscal year 2019 budget policies. This is just basically kind of setting the rules as we move forward for next year's budget. So anybody have any comments from the public? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number two is a resol, sorry, a resolution adapting an updated financial reserves policy. I'm going to ask Brandon to come up and talk about this one. It's very exciting for us. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Brandon Wright, Chief Financial Officer and Assistant City Administrator. Yes, the financial reserves policy is a very important principle of our overall financial governance, so as we look at the, generally speaking, how it is, how much money that we keep in reserves, it ultimately helps us receive better bond ratings, and those bond ratings means we can do more projects for the money that we have, and spend less money really on interest for those things. The financial reserves policy really comes in two ways. First, there's the general fund reserves policy. We're increasing that to, from 15% to 20% of operating expenditures to 17% to 25%. That gives about, the target being about three months of reserves, which really for your personal finances as well, city finances really is just a good mark for us to achieve. We're also looking at how it is that we approach our overall liquidity. Liquidity when it comes to your finances is essentially how quickly you can turn your assets into cash. Cash is very liquid. A road is not very liquid, right? It's difficult for me to turn a road into money tomorrow, and as a principle, you want to be a more liquid organization and have more cash on hand. It also addresses for our governmental and business-type funds, how much, how many current assets we have on hand, as well as how much we have in those cash and short-term investments, which are the most liquid form of our, of our current assets. So really, so it sets policies and targets for those areas, as well as our general fund unassigned reserves. Those policies will do well as we meet with bond rating agencies. They'll look at that. They'll see that we have good governance practices in place for meeting those targets, and we've set high targets for ourselves in order to achieve. That should help us as we approach them to hopefully have a bond rating increase.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate your hard work on that. Anyone from the public have any comments on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Brandon, don't get... Brandon, don't get comfy. Number three, resolution approving a 28E intergovernmental agreement between the City of Davenport and the Davenport Community School District for the purpose of providing two additional sworn school resource officers at Davenport Schools. I'm also going to ask Brandon to come back up and ask him to do this one. I don't know if you want to cover number seven or if you just want to keep coming back up. There's several that are tied together and these are all exciting opportunities, so thank you.
It's a short walk and I can do either one of them, but maybe I'll just cover both while I'm up here. So, the, so number three is that 28E intergovernmental agreement with the school district. As we updated the council a couple of weeks ago, one of the exciting things about the close of fiscal year 2017 was that we had some extra reserves on hand in order to accomplish some of the major goals that the city has. One of those was to, was to provide more resources to public safety so that we could be more effective in some of the community outreach efforts that the police department does. They've been very successful in the things that they do, that they do very well. Some additional resources would also help as they continue to face the challenges that they do. So, in partnership with the school district and the Bechtel Trust, we were able to put together, really with Mayor Klipch's leadership with that, put together a $1.3 million grant proposal that the police department brought forward for four additional police officers. Two of those police officers would serve as school liaison officers to the, to the school district. Two of those would be enhancing our community policing effort as well. So, we are very happy with that to bring that forward. Again, a $1.3 million grant on that, $600,000 of that coming from the Bechtel Trust, $600,000 from the City of Davenport and the remainder part being provided by the, the school district for that. It's a three-year grant, so it provides four officers over three years as we continue to, to make Davenport a safe community for people to live in. So, that's, that's that item, so we bring that forward. So, 28E is necessary in order to have that agreement with the, the school district. Number, and I'll just jump to number seven if that's okay, since I'm on a roll. So, the, number seven is the budget amendment that would provide for, for those mechanisms. So, you have a $5.6 million budget amendment. Number one was creating that special public safety fund. That's the one that we would use to fund those four officers out of for that three-year period. The second point on that is replacing a fire engine. Very important to our fire department is having current and well-maintained vehicles in order to perform their, their public safety efforts. So, we are replacing a fire engine with that money, with some leftover reserves that we had. And then the third component of that is constructing interchange tracks and a line exchange at the transload facility. So, with the Sterlite project going in and future development that we would expect happen in, to happen in that area, the, it's, it's a good problem and a bad problem that the current transload facility is just undersized for that amount of use. And so, in order to ensure that, that the vehicular traffic in the area can travel safely, in order to make sure that the trains can do the business that they need to, we need to build some interchange tracks and a line extension that would essentially provide additional area for storage on the tracks, places for trains to pass each other as they're busily going along in that area.
Excellent. Thank you. Any others who wanted to comment? Just kidding. Thank you. Okay, so back to item number three. Anyone from the public would like to comment on item number three? And that was in regards to 28E intergovernmental agreement between the City of Davenport and the Davenport Community School District. Anyone from council? Alderman Mattson?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman. Just want to thank the mayor, city administrator, the chief of police, everybody that worked on it, Mr. Bittner, the private-public partnerships with the school, putting more officers in the schools to develop those relationships and trust is critical and we see how it works now and just to expand upon that is, is a wonderful idea. And then, of course, more resources and officers in our neighborhoods with the Nets program. This is a wonderful partnership. This is one of the best, quite frankly, I think, one of the better things we've done in a long time to, in my long tenure on the, on the council and it's great to see how everybody came together and worked together to do this, these two, two needs that, that will benefit so much to our kids, our schools, and our neighborhoods. So, I just want to say thank you very much for everybody that worked on that.
Thank you. Alderman Dickman?
Thank you, Chair. Also, I wanted to second Alderman Mattson's thoughts about my gratitude for everyone who worked together to come up with such creative solutions to really address some of the things that we've been struggling to address for a number of years. And we also had a meeting earlier today as the Public Safety Committee to discuss further ideas and further ways that we can use collaboration to address some of these issues. And so, I'm hoping that we will continue to have support from the rest of our community as we work through some of the challenges we're facing.
Thank you. Also, wanted to share when this was first shared during a management meeting that we, several of us had shared our concern and our hopes that this, these positions would continue beyond the three years. So, I think that as we continue to move forward, that is a goal of, I don't want to speak for everybody, but on council, that is certainly our goal, that we want to make sure that we have enough resources for the community. So, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to share as well that one of the, the exciting parts of the work, not only the partners came together to put this together, but equally committed to start immediately looking for the extension. Because I think that's important. A lot of times when you get this type of funding, you kind of take a sigh of relief and then three years later you say, oh, my goodness, what are we going to do now? The idea is to start immediately looking at extending this well beyond that time. And if I may, Madam Chair, you know, you mentioned also the replacement of the fire truck and maybe that ties in with number seven as we get down there, I know. But I'd ask interim chief Bickford to come up for just a moment if he's, if he could, please. Is he still here? So, I'm there. I just wanted to maybe mention the new ISO ratings. That's extremely important. You didn't know that I was going to ask you, so I didn't want to surprise you with that.
Little heads up, would help.
Uh, but.
Yeah, that's right. You didn't know what I was going to ask you, but, no, but seriously, that's another good news. I mean, we're talking about a lot of great things happening in our community, the new fire truck, the new partnerships, but mention, talk a little bit about that as well.
Jim Bickford, interim fire chief. Just briefly, we got our, ISO was in earlier this year to evaluate the Davenport Fire Department and the Water Company and the Dispatch Center. And through a lot of hard work from District Mike Carlson and our accreditation team, we were able to put a package together and use some values we weren't able to use before, like they gave it, now gave us credit for inspection program, fire investigations and pub ed. We were able to reduce, and it's like golf, the lower the score, the better. We're able to reduce our, our classification from a three to a two, which will affect the insurance cost for our commercial properties within this community, or will likely reduce the insurance cost for our commercial properties.
So, again, I think it's important to understand that this is another great work. Thank you and, and the whole staff and, again, District Chief Carlson and his Carlton as well. But also, that's good news that we're, again, even safer than we were a year ago as by this rating organization. So, thank you very much for your efforts as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief, for coming up. Appreciate that. I think now we can move on to item four. Item four is a resolution approving Southeast Little League to construct a new building in Prairie Heights Park for equipment storage. Anyone from the public would like to comment on this? Anyone from council? Alderman Gribb?
Yeah, I just want to speak out in, in favor of this. My, my son's both playing Southeast Little League and I want to make sure that my friends on the council are up to speed on what's going on in the Little League world. Little League is, is having a struggle keeping numbers because of travel baseball. When I was a kid in Davenport, I think there were eight or nine different Little Leagues. Now, we're down to four. Three of them are very healthy. One could use some help. Southeast Little League is one of those Little Leagues that is very healthy and it is a community builder. There was a, our league night at the end of the season this year where we did fireworks legally for the first time this year. We did fireworks, the kids played, we enjoyed dinner. There were hundreds of people there and their families getting to know each other. We don't see that all of the time now. So, it is a community center. This new indoor hitting facility and maintenance shed is going to keep the Little League competitive with the travel ball teams. And I want to commend the league president, Thomas Mason IV, has, has raised $50,000 to $70,000 in private funding to get this built. With this going in and then the Miracle Field being built on the same property, Southeast Little League will be one of the premier Little Leagues in, in the entire state of Iowa. So, I hope you'll support this resolution.
Excellent. Go Little League. Thank you. Anybody else from the council? Okay, this item will move on. Number five is a resolution approving the purchase of five truck chases with trades from Truck Country of Iowa, of Davenport, Iowa, at the price of $329,225 and authorizing Mayor Frank Klipch to sign and manage any related agreements. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Okay, this item will move on. Number six is a resolution approving the purchase of five truck bodies from Tri-State Truck Equipment of Dubuque, Iowa, at the price of $334,340 and authorizing Mayor Frank Klipch to sign and manage any related agreements. Anyone from the public? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number seven, we've kind of already discussed. It's a motion directing the city administrator to amend the fiscal year 2018 budget by $5,608,000 for the purposes of establishing the Special Public Safety Fund to fund four additional sworn police officers through a 28E intergovernmental agreement with the Davenport Community School District, replacing a fire engine for the fire department and constructing interchange tracks and a line exchange at the city's transload facility. Anyone from the public wish to discuss this? And I see Mayor Klipch. Oh. Alderman, Alderman Gordon?
Mayor Protim Gordon, please. No, I'm teasing, totally teasing. This, this amendment, budget amendment, has a lot of good stuff in it and everything's been talked about except the transload facility. And so, particularly for Alderman, Meker and I, those of us that have been around a few years, I think when I got on council eight years ago, I think we'd, we'd received approval for the funding from the Economic Development Administration, the federal government, to build the transload, but had a lot of hoops to jump through to get that built. So, this is finally nice to see this come to full fruition. You know, this, our investment is leveraged millions upon millions of dollars, a federal investment to build this transload facility. And we went from a, really in a matter of a couple of, few weeks, having a transload facility with a brand-new operator and zero customers, to Sterlite coming in, needing full capacity of the transload facility, which is one of the reasons they were attracted to our industrial park, and the need to ensure that we have a capacity for additional use by other potential customers in the future. So, I think this is a really exciting, long, long time coming, but it's exciting to see this all come to fruition and appreciate all my colleagues' support, current and past on this project over the years. So, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure we understand what's just been happening on those points. This is, we got, can't say enough about the leadership of our city administrator, our chief financial officer and assistant city administrator, director of finance, and the discipline of our colleagues at this dais. We created by good, efficient use of funding and living within our means, still doing a tremendous amount of streets and sewers and infrastructure, economic development, support of our police, we were able to then create an opportunity to have an extra $5 million to spend. So, I think it's understand, this is great news and it kind of goes when you hear all the things going on, it just kind of gets in there. But the reality is I can't thank the staff enough for your efforts, but also our colleagues again for pulling together to make some tough decisions, do things right, improve our services and our support to our community, live within our budget and means and then have some resources to be able to do these other exciting things as well. So, thank you all and thank all of my colleagues as well for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add to that, that we're also able to increase our reserves, so it's even more exciting. So, thank you. Item number eight is a motion setting a public hearing for November 15th, 2017, at 5:30 p.m. in the council chambers for the purpose of amending the North Urban Renewal Area Plan. Anyone from, from public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move on. Number nine is a motion awarding the purchase of two high-top, one-ton vans to Reynolds Motor Company of Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $72,198.32. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Anyone from council? This item will move forward. And number 10 is a motion awarding the purchase of three fellow spotlights to Tazza Supplies LLC of Naperville, Illinois, in the amount of $49,932.79. Anyone from the public? Come on forward. Please state your name and ward or address.
My name's Adriana. I'm a member of the fifth ward. I'm just wondering what that is going to be used for, this follow spotlights? And where?
That is a great question.
A lot of money for, I'm just wondering.
Um, my understanding, it would be for fire? Is that correct? We will find out and we can certainly get back to you. Great question. Thank you.
Sorry. The follow spotlights, I'm like, what's a follow spotlight? But they are just spotlights upgrades for the junior theater program that we have down there at the, at the theater, so.
And where is that theater?
Uh, it's in the Anne Whitmar complex on Eastern and 29th, I think, is the official, so.
Thank you. Great question and thank you, Scott, for coming up. Appreciate it. Anyone from council have any questions? Okay, this item will move forward. I recommend all items move to the consent agenda. All in favor? Oh, second, sorry. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. All these items move forward. In addition, we have purchases that are listed just for your knowledge and besides that, I will close finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions this evening? Seeing none? Are there any public with business this evening? Please come up. Again, please identify yourself.
Adriana of the fifth ward again. Here on number six, under purchases of $10,000 to $50,000. Goose Hollow Soil and Top Seeding. I'm just wondering, why would we get outsourced soil when we sell soil? Our city does.
Well, we will, we'll actually answer that. We'll, maybe, maybe we can bring somebody up to answer that specific question. We can do that? Do we have somebody? This is typically the section where we just take information from you. It really could have been under that other area that we had under public with business.
Your honor, why don't you just, Director, to talk to us after the meeting?
Yeah, that's what Charlie do. So, you can talk to Brian Shad afterwards. Thank you for that clarification, Tom. And they can answer those questions.
Since I'm up here, I did miss, there's a little bit of commotion going on, so I missed something that we went over under public safety. Is it okay to cover that now?